Okay, I'm going to call this City Council meeting order. Welcome to the Montclair City Council. And we'll begin with the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask the city clerk to introduce those individuals, please.
All right, tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Robert Edwards of Set Free Ministry, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Rue.
... of Set Free Church here in Montclair, and thank you for having me, City Council members and citizens of Montclair. If we could bow our heads dearlyly, Father Lord, we thank you for today, and Lord, we invite you into this meeting, Lord, and then through your awesome wisdom and discernment, Lord, that the decisions and the topics that are here tonight, Lord, just be found with resolve and effective for both parties. So, Lord, we just thank you and include you in this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. All right, let's have the pledge. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's have Roe Call, please.
Councilmember Mendez.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Potem Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Dutre.
Here.
Thank you.
This is public comment, this is an opportunity for members of the public to discuss any item that's not on the agenda, which we cannot comment as a City Council, or any item that's on the consent calendar of the agenda. The public hearing item will be dealt separately. You'll have five minutes, and I'll ask the city clerk if she's got any members of the public that wishes to speak.
All right, our first speaker is Ruby Long from Kurt Hagman's office. Let me go ahead and find her. All right, go ahead, Ruby.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hello, Ruby, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. I just have a quick announcement, we are going to have our next shredding event. It is going to be on Saturday, March 29th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and this one's going to be in Chino Hills, so we do switch between our five cities, and it's going to be at the shops in Chino Hills, which is at 13920 City Center Drive. It's a free event, it's for all of our residents within the five cities. If you'd like to preregister, it gives you, it's faster for you to move down the line, and that's at hagmanshred0325 event bright dot com. If you have any questions, just call our office, if you need us to get you registered, we can do that as well, and once again, it's a free event, and hopefully we'll see you there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ruby, and again, you're being recognized because you're doing a presentation about what's going on from your offices, supervisor Hagman's office, which we allow under our policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a-
All right, so-
Okay, our next speaker is Paula Avi.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Paula Avi, I'm Communications Director for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I am here tonight, though, as a member of the Ontario Inner Faith Council. Last summer, that council was formed in the city of Ontario with other, myself and other pastors, I'm not a pastor, but others pastors in Ontario, and our vision for our council is building bridges of understanding and respect among people of different faiths and cultures through service and communications in our community. And we hope, over the next couple of years, to double, triple in our size of how many members are on our inner faith, and we hope to have Montclair join our Ontario Montclair then, Inner Faith Council, eventually. One of our goals for this year is to have a service fair, and the service fair will be held in Ontario, so the surrounding cities would be involved as well. We hope to have every congregation and every ward to represent a different charity. So I am reaching out to you and people that are attending, if you know of a charity or an organization that has a service need or a service project, you know, to contact me, I'm going to leave cards at the front. And we hope to work with them on a project maybe prior to that time or that day where people in the community can come and do service right there, whether it be making blankets or writing letters or Red Cross there, or some other kind of service, or cleanup service prior to that weekend in the area. There's just so much that can be done with service, especially the month of September, we want to honor that, and that's what I wanted to share. So, thank you.
Right, appreciate that, thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Jared Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Dr. Jared Garcia. I'm a parent of a first grader who attends Buena Vista School located here in Montclair. I stand before you today to address a dire and ongoing safety hazard for the lack of adequate crossing guard protections. Currently, as you can see from a diagram that was provided to you, presently, the crossing guard designated for the Ontario side, Fourth Street and Benson, only stopped traffic in an L-shaped pattern marked in yellow. This limited coverage poses a significant safety threat for over 50 children and parents who cross daily on the Montclair side, which is in red, San Bernardino and Benson Avenue. The crossing guard does not provide assistance to children crossing on the Montclair side, leaving them vulnerable and unprotected. Since August of '24, countless parents and I have heard crossing guards say, "Cross when you think it is safe." This message is clear and alarming signal that our children's safety is not a priority. Why is this unsafe? Firstly, high traffic volume. The heavy traffic at this intersection necessitates a designated crosswalk and crossing guard, which you do have, yet there is no protection for children crossing on the Montclair side, which puts them at risk every day. Two, the geometric misalignment intersection. Since the intersection is not square but diamond in shape, it creates dangerous blind spots for drivers, and this increases the likelihood of accidents. Three, driver confusion. Drivers focus on the person in the bright yellow vest rather than people themselves attempting to cross. This is a recipe for disaster and has already led to numerous near misses. For the last five years, Mr. Anthony, an exceptional crossing guard, ensured the traffic was stopped on the Ontario side, so the children crossed safely on the Montclair side. Unfortunately, he was let go in August of '24 by the Crossing Guard Agency who told him he refused to follow their agency policies. His integrity and his commitment to our children's safety never wavered, and now we all take deep breaths before crossing this intersection, trying to protect our children as we cross, as we see the crossing guard standing on the opposite side, following the policies and just staring at us. Safety above policy is in question here, and our children are not sacrificial lambs for the bureaucracy of city jurisdiction red tape. I am one of at least 50 parents who are committed to speaking out until the city resolves this issue. Efforts to date to rectify this issue. Montclair PD directed traffic for about a week in September. Ontario mayor observed the intersection but took no more further action. Multiple complaints have been filed by parents to the principal of Buena Vista, Mr. Barnett. Ontario Montclair School District Safety Officers were informed. All city management services, which is the company for crossguard supervisors, complaints were made. The Ontario Montclair School District Safety tip line was also done. Responses have been consistently inadequate, filled with empty promises of "we'll voice your concerns and get back to you." This is not appropriate and unsafe. My involvement has been throughout, with complaints filed myself and bringing this up to the school site committee, which I am a member of, and with no avail. Our kids do not deserve "we'll get to this when we can." Safety is the priority. My recommendations to you, the council members. One, approve a safety crossing guard. The city must unanimously motion to provide and approve a secondary crossguard for this intersection for the upcoming budget contract. This is not just a recommendation but a necessity. Two, temporary safe plan. Until the safe, until the second crossing guard is in place, which is at best August of this year, the city council must direct and negotiate temporary safety plan with the current crossing guard company. This plan should include stopping traffic on the Ontario side, allowing children on the Montclair side to cross safely, and any other measures for safety if needed. I will also send a video to the council for you to review as an example of this ongoing safety issue that we accrue every day. What we need now is decisive corrective action. I thank you for your time and your consideration, and I am open to questions from the council.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Ed, City Manager of Star, can you, I know this is brought to my attention about a year ago, I recall, and can you have staff look into this and send a memo to City Council on what's going on? And then I will suggest that the parents, if, you know, if there are several parents who are very concerned about this, let's start a petition, names, addresses, and submit that to the city manager's office or the city clerk's office, and this way we can also respond to your concerns. I would suggest that part of that petition is also address your issues, you just state it right now, and in this way, we can do our job on our side to review what's going on, understand your concerns, and see if we can come up with a resolution. Okay? Anything else, City Manager Star?
Yeah, I will certainly do that. I have to say that I'm surprised because the city pays for one-third of the share of the cost of the crossing guard. This was an agreement reached between the city and Ontario Montclair School District and the city of Ontario, where this is the first crossing guard and the only crossing guard that the Ontario Montclair School District actually participates with covering the cost. And my understanding is that the crossing guard would be providing the necessary coverage for all of the intersections indicated on the map. I'm seeing here that they cross from the east to west side of Benson Avenue and then have the crossing on Fourth Street on the Ontario side. Why would they not be doing that on the Montclair side from the north to the south side of San Bernardino Street? It seems that there should be a parallel level of service for both of the communities, and I will certainly convey that to the superintendent of the Ontario Montclair School District.
Right, so let's get a memo from, a memo from staff to us, explain to us what's going on, and we'll have the parents all submit a petition to your office, Ed, the city manager's office, of their concern, you know, obviously there'll be names, phone numbers, this way we can have communication with the residents there. Okay? Thank you. Anybody, I'm sorry, any other speakers?
Our next speaker is Ever Rodriguez.
What was the name, Madam City Clerk?
Edgar Rodriguez.
Ever?
Ever, excuse me.
Ever Rodriguez.
Oh, yeah, good evening, thank you, Mayor, council members, for this opportunity to allow the public to speak about things that go around in the community. I also want to second, what Dr. Jared Garcia had mentioned, I'm also a parent of two students that attend Buena Vista Arts Integrated Elementary School, and the concerns that I have, I've been contacting the school district, you know, the school admin about this issue since my children started at that school two years ago, and just the intersection between Benson and San Bernardino is extremely dangerous for pedestrians. I first noticed this when I attended one of the open houses at the school to see if I wanted my children to attend that school, and, you know, during that encounter, you know, drivers were being rude, verbally abusing, like, you know, saying, saying things that is just not the right conduct as a citizen of this community. And it's, you know, just that verbal abuse, shouting, hurry up, I mean, we're walking our children to school, they obviously do not have the same pace as, as an adult. Drivers don't obey the crossguard. I've been in various situations where, where I'm crossing, and the drivers just kind of creep into the intersection, just making, making it a unsafe environment for other, other vehicles, drivers, pedestrians, anyone trying to cross that dangerous intersection. Drivers stop over the pedestrian crossway, there's various occasions that I've crossed where we had to wait for that, for a vehicle to clear that, that right of way for the pedestrian in order to, to cross, you know, causing delays and frustration amongst the, you know, the other parents and pedestrians trying to cross. I've also voiced my concern with, with the school about vehicles not obeying the speed limit. Many occasions, it's just ridiculous that that's a 25 mile an hour speed limit when children are present, you know, going, going, crossing, crossing the street to go to school, and people are still driving 40 or faster, it's just extremely dangerous trying to, to walk around there. I mean, I'm, I'm a grown man, and I'm afraid to cross that intersection just because I feel that vehicles won't stop on time, just, just, just because of how fast they're going. It's just a complete negligence as, as a driver. As I mentioned, I brought to the attention of the school admin back in 2023, told me they were going to talk to the school district about it, and someone was going to reach out to me. Obviously, that call or email never happened. I've spoken to teachers about this issue, I'm also part of the school site council, and one of the teachers there who has been there for 20 years told me this has been an issue for 20 years. It's just unbelievable, just the gross negligence by, by the city, that in 20 years, this issue has not been adequately addressed. It was also brought up in that meeting that Ontario, on the Ontario side, they do provide a crossguard. I don't know if this is misinformation or what is going on, but why is there no crossguard on the Montclair side? And over these past few years, I just feel the city demonstrates complete disregard for pedestrian safety by not providing crossguards and appropriate traffic control along that, around that perimeter, you know, that one mile radius. I've always, you know, all the time, I see someone holding a vigil because, you know, someone got struck by a vehicle because they were either speeding or didn't see a pedestrian, whatever the case is, just that whole area is extremely dangerous for pedestrians. I feel the city should be a safe for pedestrians and not the other way around, protecting vehicles and the laws for operating a vehicle. And I would like to request if, if provide a one-on-one with a director of traffic or the appropriate local dignitaries to our next school site council meeting to go over this ongoing issue. That, that's a request that I would like to make here today, if that's possible. Appreciate your time and thank you for, for hearing me on this issue, and I will, again, I'll talk to-
No more cards.
No cards, okay. All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is public hearing item, and this is to consider adoption of resolution or, a resolution number 25-3501, Stavetine Community Facility District, Village at Montclair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize, I, I, could you please explain to the two gentlemen why we cannot engage in a discussion on the matter again?
Well, the item's not on the agenda, and under the California Brown Act, we can't discuss items not on the agenda, but the city manager, as directed by his council, will look into the matter. He'll be talking to the responsible parties who regulate in the school district, I'm assuming, and then we also ask the parents or the residents to submit a petition to the city manager's office, so we know who are the concerned parties, we have names, addresses, phone numbers, and this way we can better coordinate the concerns raised.
And I just wanted you guys to understand that the limitations we have on us, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for doing that.
Okay, let's get on to the public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at this time, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, our Economic Development Agency Director, Mr. Fuentes, will be making a PowerPoint presentation on this item, and in addition to that, we have representatives from a special legal counsel. Richard Wall with BBK is in the audience, he'll be able to respond to any questions members of the council have. In addition, Neel Fumar with David Tausick and Associates, she's the consultant that we have historically used to develop the Community Facility District program within the areas designated by the city council for Community Facility Districts. So, Mr. Fuentes, PowerPoint presentation is with you, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Dutre, members of the city council and staff. Mayor Dutre, I believe there was provided a script for you to start off the presentation-
Yeah, I may go with the script here, I just know it's a script, so gotta follow along now. All right, so I want to say again, this is the time and place set for the public hearing on the formation of the City of Montclair Communities Facility District Number 2025-1, the Village at Montclair, de levy a special tax there in, in the provision of certain services. The public hearing, as I stated earlier, is now open, and to the city clerk, has notice of the public hearing been mailed and published in accordance with law.
Yes, notice was mailed and published in accordance with law.
Okay, now I call on staff for a report regarding the formation of the Community Facilities District, thank you.
Yes, and then, Mayor Dutre, members of the city council and staff, for the record, I would like to note that on the dais, there is a revised revision to the exhibits for the resolution. Exhibit A and B have been revised, as well as the exhibit for the ordinance. The reason why we have the revisions was that during the prior meeting where we had the resolution of intent, the prior amended rates for the CFDs were based off of square footage, and the developer had requested that, in lieu of having the tax based off a square footage, that the tax be based off of the parcel sizes, and so staff did make those changes, and so those changes were included in the revised Exhibits A and B for the Resolution 25-3471, as well as for the Ordinance 25-1011. So I just wanted to state that for the record, and copies were provided to the city council, and they are also available for the public as well. And so with that, we will begin the presentation for tonight's meeting. So tonight, we have a presentation related to Community Facilities District Number 2025-1, also known as the Village at Montclair, and next slide, please. And so to start the process, the CFD is also known as the Melrose Community Facilities Act. The act was adopted by the California Legislature in 1982, and it provides for alternative financing methods for local governments. The act allows local governments to finance public improvements through bond and debitness, and it also allows local governments to finance maintenance of public improvements and charging for certain community services like police and fire districts. The Melrose Act is also, creates the Community Facilities District, so it's kind of interchangeable between either Melrose or CFD, but it is created by a local government agency within a defined property boundaries. Next slide. So the formation of a CFD requires a two-thirds majority of vote from registered voters in the proposed boundaries of the CFD. If there's fewer than 12 registered voters, the current landowner has the right to vote on it, and each landowner receives one vote per acre. In this particular CFD, there is only one landowner, so that landowner will receive all the votes, which total roughly five votes right now. And then, once approved, a special tax lien is placed on each property within the CFD. Property owners pay the special tax annually on their property taxes. Special taxes imposed by a CFD cannot be based on a property value. Instead, there are special calculations and formulas that can be used, and CFDs can be levied via square footage, parcel size, and in this case, as I had mentioned, the developer had requested that the tax be based on parcel size, so that's what we're going with for this CFD. Next slide. And then, we also have adoption of local goals and policies for community facility districts. The Melrose Act requires a local agency forming a CFD to establish local goals and policies related to CFDs, and the city of Montclair adopted the statement of local goals and policies related to CFDs on January 3rd, 2011 pursuant to Resolution Number 11-2872. And then, as of to date, the city has formed two CFDs. The first CFD is CFD 2011-1, it includes the Paseos, Vista Court, and the Alex and Kendry, and that CFD is comprised of two special taxes, special tax A that relates to maintenance of the public right of way, and that CFD, as well as special tax B related to public safety services that are provided in that CFD. And then the second CFD that we have is CFD 2011-2 Aero Station, and again, that CFD is comprised of two taxes, the first tax is special tax A related to maintenance of public right of way, and special tax B related to public safety services. Next slide. And just a little bit about the project as part of the CFD, so the project, as we know, is the Village at Montclair, it received both approvals from the Planning Commission and the Montclair City Council, with final approval by the city council on December 7th, 2020. The project is a mixed-use development on approximately 6.6 acres, located at the intersection of Arrow Highway in Fremont. The project is the fifth residential project within the boundaries of the North Montclair Downtown specific plan, and it's the first project to include a mixed-use component that would allow for commercial and retail to occur on the ground floor level. The project also provides urban-style mixed community with onsite amenities, including walkable design features, direct access to the Montclair Transcenter via the promenade, which is an area located on the northern part of the property, and it will include a .2 acre public park in the middle. And the project consists of 330 apartment units and approximately 25,000 square feet of ground floor commercial lease space. Next slide. And so, this proposed Community Facilities District Number 20-1 will fund ongoing maintenance and service costs for public improvements and public safety. The project is developing certain public improvements, which must be maintained by the city. In addition, it is expected that the project's development will generate additional costs for public safety, and that is why we are also including a component related to public safety costs. The Village at Montclair is owned by CRP, CRP VP, Montclair Village Owners, and one of the principals, Don Henry, is in the audience as well for tonight's meeting. The city council was provided with a document entitled Community Facility Districts Report, City of Montclair Community Facilities District Number 2025-1, that was provided for the city council and included in the agenda. The report describes the services that will be provided as part of the CFD, the estimated costs of the various components, and it includes the amended rate and method of apportionment for this special tax, as well as the boundaries of the CFD and what will be levied. Next slide. Since the resolution, again, as I mentioned prior to the beginning of the meeting, or the public hearing, that the property owner requested changes to the special tax rate and method of apportionment, the changes shifted the special tax rate per building and square footage to a rate per acre of land. It did not change any of the calculations related to the maximum special taxes that will be levied in the CFDs, and then the changes have been documented in the amended and restated rate and method of apportionment that was provided earlier today. Copies, as I mentioned, were given to the city council place on the dais, as well as provided to members of the public. The proposed CFD Number 2025-1 will finance maintenance costs and lighting for parks, parkways, streets, open space, and storm drain systems within the public right of way, and will also cover police and fire protection services for that area. Next slide. And so the slide right here provides a boundary map of the CFD. As you can see, this is the map of the project, and it has the Birch Street and Station Street, as well as Fremont Avenue, which is not shown on the slide, my apologies for that, and then it also has Arrow Highway on the southern portion. And then, it also has Arrow Highway on the southern portion. So these will be the parcels that will be levied the tax. As you can see on the upper right corner, there is a parcel that is not being levied. That is a parcel that the city council did allow staff to acquire as part of the city's intent to construct an additional public parking structure. And then, in the middle, there is a parcel where the park will be, so those two properties will not be levied the special tax, as they are both owned by the City of Montclair. Next slide. Proposed community facilities district number 2025-1, cost of services. On this slide, you can see the estimated cost of services that will be financed by the CFD, and then you can see that the description of services are broken down between maintenance services and public safety services. The maintenance services will be comprised of special tax A, and will cover the costs for maintenance within the public right-of-world. You can see that the costs include street sweeping, tree trimming, graffiti, storm drain, storm drain maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, street maintenance, street replacement, park and right-of-way landscaping, water expenses, trash removal, sewer, streetlights. The park will also have a fountain that we would need to get costs related to the maintenance and operation, as well as a park shade structure. These are all the maintenance costs that will be levied against the property, and then these are all improvements that the developer is doing as part of the project within the public right-of-world. And then, the second component will be the public safety services, and those costs have public safety costs, which are spread between both the police department and the fire department, and we are also including costs related to emergency vehicle apparatus maintenance. Given the increased demand that the project will have on public safety services and current vehicles, we wanted to include a cost to recoup any maintenance for the vehicles being used. And then, as part of the development of the CFD, the city does contract with a firm called Merrell Group that helps develop the maintenance costs for the CFDs, and they utilize, the state of California publishes annually a homeowners association cost that provides the breakdown for maintenance of various items that are within a public right-of-world. And so, as part of that, we did get this information. We worked with Merrell Group, as well as the developer, to get the actual information, as well as all of the quantities and sizes for all of the costs that we have. And so, we worked with both Merrell Group and the developer on the actual number, and these are the numbers that we did agree upon as part of the formation of the CFD. And then, the total amount that will be levied on the CFD is $143,512. And I would like to add that there is also a $15,000 administrative fee that is added in addition to the $143,512, and that amount helps offset the cost for the publication that the city has to provide, reporting annually related to the CFD, what we're levying, what we are collecting. It also covers a cost related to submittal of reports to the Samuel County Tax Assessor's Agency, and then the publication of the reporting that we do annually and provide. Next slide, please. And as part of the CFD, as you can see, the total estimated annual cost for all of the services is approximately $158,500. And again, that is including the $15,000 for administrative expenses. I would also like to note that as part of the CFD, there are caps on the maximum amount that can be levied annually on the CFD, and so the maximum annual increase is 6%, with a minimum annual increase of 2%. So that helps deal with any escalations in terms of costs. And then, the special taxes will be levied starting fiscal year 2025-26. So we'll be seeing those as part of the budget that will be presented for fiscal year 2025-26, and we should be receiving those starting next fiscal year. Next slide. And then, on this slide, you can see, as I'd mentioned before, that the taxes will be broken down by parcels, so we have a total of five parcels that will be levied the tax for a total of 3.361 acres, and then the special tax rates, you can see here, have the per acre tax that will be part of the special tax A, and then special tax B. And again, these taxes will not be levied on the two parcels that are owned by the city, as those are tax-exempt, and they will only be levied on the parcels that actually have developed property on them. And so, next slide. So as part of the CFD process, staff is making the following recommendations. Staff is recommending adoption of Resolution Number 25-3471, establishing community facilities district number 2025-1, and the boundaries thereof. Staff is also making the recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 25-3472, calling a special election and submitting to the voters of CFD Number 2025-1, a proposition for the annual levy of special taxes within said CFD to pay the cost of certain services to be provided by the CFD, adoption of Resolution Number 25-3473, declaring the results of the special election for the CFD, and related to the proposition concerning the annual levy of the special taxes, and then the establishment of appropriation limits, and then conduct the first reading of ordinance Number 25-1011, levying the special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2025-26, and then setting a public hearing to conduct the second reading and consider adoption of ordinance Number 25-1011 on Monday, March 17, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers. Next slide. And with that, that concludes the PowerPoint presentation as part of the CFD for tonight. And then, if there's any questions by the council, I can certainly do my best to answer those, and then we also have, as city manager Star mentioned, we also have Richard Wall from BB&amp;K, who can provide any other, who could help answer any other questions, as well as Nehal Thumar from David Tausick and Associates, to provide any answers to any questions at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna continue on with the public hearing item. Are there any persons that wish to present testimony or protest regarding the formation of CFD Number 2025-1? Anybody in the audience, anybody wish? I don't hear anything. Have, to the city clerk, have any written protest been received regarding the formation of CFD Number 2025-1?
No written protests have been received.
Great, thank you. To the city clerk, are there any persons requested to vote in the territorial CFD Number 2025-1?
The County of San Bernardino Registrar Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within the territory.
Great, thank you. To the city clerk, have the owners of all the taxable property in the community facilities district number 2025-1 consented to the holding of the special election on March 3, 2025, immediately following this public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. To the city clerk, do you concur that the special election may be held on March 3, 2025, immediately following this public hearing?
Yes, I concur.
Okay. There has been no testimony or protest received or heard. I'm prepared to close this public hearing. However, before I do that, I would like to provide anyone who would like to submit any written or oral comments a final opportunity to do so. Once the public hearing is closed, we will prohibit from accepting any further oral or written testimony. So at this time, anybody wish to approach us? Any oral or any written? Seeing no others who wish to speak, I declare this public hearing now closed. I'll bring this matter back to the city council. Councilmember Mendez.
Yes, I just had one question for you, Mr. Fuentes. Under minimum annual increase, we have 2% per fiscal year. Is there any reason why that couldn't be 0%? Just in case there were no cost increases?
Yes, so councilmember Mendez, if there are no cost increases that the city is receiving, we don't have to increase the levy on the CFDs. There is built into the law, the language about the 2%, and that is to take any costs for inflation that the city may be receiving, but our past practice has been that if we are, if the CFD is not collecting enough funds, then we will increase the levy. However, if it's not, we will maintain it at its current level.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ru.
Yes, thank you. Question I have, whether it's for the developer, or staff, or anybody else, is it planned to have an HOA on this property?
Councilmember Ru, I don't believe that there is an HOA that will be part of the development. The development is owned by Village Partners, and we do require them to have an operations and management agreement with the city. That does require them to have management staff available, but since it is not a for-sale property, I don't anticipate there being an HOA as part of it, but certainly, we have Don Henry here from Village Partners, who can better answer that question.
Yes.
Go ahead, Don.
Mayor, to answer your question, councilmember Ru, there is no HOA planned for the property as there is a professional management company.
So, how will this be paid in the future? Each resident will pay a portion. Is that correct?
It is built into our expenses. It's not based on a residence. It's part of the operating expenses off the property.
So, it's not answering the question, really. I move in there, I pay so much a month in rent. I'm not billed for this portion of, so it's paid as my rent goes up, correct?
Yes, it's an ongoing operating expenses, and expenses go up. It's separate from the income or the rent charge to the tenant.
Okay, so, a tenant is charged so much a month in rent. How is this paid, then?
Off the income off the property, off the rent.
So in essence, in some way, if the income doesn't match, the rent goes up?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at. So essentially, the future tenant will in some way or another pay this, whether it's a direct bill they get, or whether it's in their monthly rent, the tenant will pay this in the future.
Well, the property will.
The tenant will.
I guess you could say that.
Yeah, the, you own it, you have to make the payment.
Right.
The only way you can get the money is from the tenant, who pays rent.
Right.
And if the expenses go up, then the rent goes up.
Within market
Right.
demands, you know, it's all predicated on market supply.
I do government affairs in the real estate industry, so I'm familiar with market demand. I'm also
Understood.
very familiar with the fact that we have zero affordable housing in California, and CFDs, Melrose, all that, just in my estimation, simply add to that. And I realize a lot of cities like it, because it adds to gentrification. They can guarantee they get the right kind of people in town, and I'm really opposed to that, because we need housing for working-class families. We have people in this city who struggle every day, and, you know, these just add to the cost of housing. And what we're doing tonight is, we're, the way this works is, you say you want it, so we say yes, but then the people who live there in the future, they don't have a say on it. They just have to pay it one way or the other, through their rent or anything else. So that's why, where do I have my notes here? That's one of the reasons I'm really struggling with some of this tonight, because I see that this is only gonna make things much more expensive in the future for people. We're already struggling with housing, and I, you know, I'm struggling with it, because I see it adds to the costs, and we don't have enough housing for working-class families. What are the rents you're thinking of paying that will be charged here?
The rents?
Well, how much rent would you charge a tenant?
Well, there depends on the size of the unit.
Right, from this range to this range.
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. On average, they're about, I'm looking for my calculator.
That's okay.
Excuse me for a minute.
Councilmember Ru, we could provide those numbers to you once we receive them from the developer.
I'd like to get just a range tonight, Mr. Fuentes. I realize that, you know, you've done a good job on this, but I'm just trying to get an estimate.
We're averaging about, on average, across the board, about About mid-2000.
So mid-2000 is what the rent would be.
Right, on average.
And then, this is folded into that? This is part of that?
Right.
Let's say it's 2,500 a month. A portion of that 2,500 would be this Melrose.
Right, well, yes, it, yes.
Nothing's free.
Nothing is.
So you're not offering this to the tenant free. The tenant has to pay it in some way or another.
Right.
So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez.
Sir, give me your name again, please.
Don Henry with the ownership.
Mr. Henry, thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it. I wish a lot of the property owners, when an item like this comes before us, they would be here, so we can ask questions directly, so kudos to you.
Happy to be here.
So thank you, it really does mean a lot. Is Michael Morris still an owner of the property?
Michael Morris has since passed away.
Oh, I was unaware.
About two years ago.
Well, I was unaware of that. He was a great man, and this particular item was my very first vote on this council on December 20, 2020, when I got sworn in.
Right.
And he lobbied me and called me and said, "Sir, I need to talk to you," and he explained to me the six-year, seven-year process that it took to get there. He expressed a reservation about an item, and I want to bring that up, because I think it affects the charge that my colleague was just addressing. There's a provision in the approval that we gave you, that commercial spaces on the bottom level, once the commercial space is vacated from the tenant, that space has to then be converted to a residential unit, correct, or rental unit, correct?
It depends on the, we have to conduct a market study to see if the demand replaces, the retail demand replaces that opportunity. There's a market study that offsets the supply and demand issue.
And if I recall, what Mr. Morris had told me, because it stuck in my head, he was a little bit uneasy about that requirement being placed on him, thought it was a little bit unfair of the city to do so, because it incurred, it tied his hands in maintaining that property as a commercial space, and if he found another tenant that wanted the space, he couldn't do so because of the requirement that you mentioned, and it might delay filling the space. So, let's say that those properties are then, or that space is then converted to a residential unit and can no longer be converted back to commercial. The fees that he's being charged, that we're asking be charged, and you're factoring into the rent, would no doubt be a bigger burden to a family that needs to rent that space as opposed to a commercial business owner, and that's where I'm struggling. Because someone of a commercial means may have a little bit more financial liquidity to go ahead and do that, as opposed to a tenant that's a family, or even just a small LLC, let's say, that wants to use it for whatever, to say just their own personal space. And maybe they're not conducting business and selling things out of it, but they just need space to function, therefore, they're gonna be charged a little bit different rates. So I, let me ask you, at any point during this process, I believe it's under the conditions of approval, were any of these items asked of you to be included, and were they part of the conditions of approval? To provide a little extra money for fire protection, sewer, lighting?
Yes, they are, they are included.
In the conditions of approval?
Yeah, and I think there's a little bit of confusion on your question. So, there are flex units out of the 300 Out of the 360 units, there are 30 units that have been designated for commercial, I believe it was 30. And Mr. Diaz can correct me on this if I'm wrong. But I believe there were 30 units that were designated as commercial. However, the agreement with the developer, Village Partners, was that we would only require, uh, I believe 10 at this time to be used as, uh, as commercial, and the remaining can be used for residential. However, they were given five years in which to ultimately develop all of those spaces in commercial. It is a mixed-use project. They came into the project well aware that they needed to build it as a mixed-use. And in order for it to be a viable mixed-use, there needs to be a healthy mix of commercial properties, uh, so that all of the businesses could succeed. Having a fewer number of commercial businesses are not going to really lend themselves to creating a thriving economic uh, commercial space there, which is why, uh, the number 30 was arrived at mutually between the parties, and the parties mutually agreed on the flex space concept.
Uh, thank you for that additional clarification, Mr. Starr.
And, and might I understand correctly that the parcels, the property, uh, under a, under special tax A, they will have, um, for all intents and purposes, an assessment of 20,315, and an additional 26,847, because these are two separate taxes?
Yes, that is correct.
So we got about maybe 46,000, actually 47,100, that will be assessed on each of the parcels?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the per acre.
It's not per unit.
So, and so this is 6.6 acres, if I'm correct, uh, if I heard correctly? 3.4. So the 47-1 will be on the 3.4 acres, of which that, that will be offset by, factored into the rent that is charged per the folks that are occupying the space.
That's right. So the total tax, the maximum that can be charged, is almost $160,000 per year, uh, on the entire project.
That's inclusive of both. Both the police and fire services, as well as public works-related maintenance.
Correct.
And if you average that out, that comes to about $36 a month.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Just writing notes here. I, I, um... I've been in favor of asking, I know there's been some disagreement up here, of asking developers that come in and want to invest in the city, I'm grateful for that. But as the, um, staff member presented and stated, there will no doubt be a demand for primarily calls for service. And that's to be expected of any development in the town. So I've advocated getting some for what I call concessions out of the developer, to say, "Okay, can you agree to give us something else in exchange for the strain that'll happen with respect to police and fire, public works, you name it?" And I know another city here in the county masters this, uh, greatly. And they do it to an art, and I actually envy them, and that's the city of Fontana, where they will get concessions out of their developers, and those developers agree to get, buy a new engine. They will pay for the engine, and the city gets to own it and use it. And that's something that we've been struggling with ourselves, that I wish we would do. And I know this is a, a way to perhaps offset those costs and bring in money for us to utilize for the services that we provide, I get it. Let me ask this, because I was informed by some folks out in that end of the county, that some of these property owners there, to offset their costs, they will privately bond their property out to offset the upfront cost for themselves, for their business. Do you guys do that? No? Okay. All right. I'll vote for this tonight, uh, because I promised Michael Morris that I would hear him out, and after hearing that the project was delayed for six years before I came on, I thought that was a little bit unfair, and who was I to hold up the project? So I gave it a fair shot, thought it'd be the, a wise investment up there, and a benefit up there, so I voted for it. So in keeping with my word to him, um, even though he's probably looking down on us, um, wondering what's going on, uh, I, I will, I will vote for this. I'm just a little bit uneasy, but at the same time, again, thank you for investing here. Um, it, it looks great. It's a lot bigger than I thought when I voted for it, I'm like, "Holy cow, this is massive." But I would like a tour of it, actually, sometime soon, just to check it out, because I haven't had a tour yet. I'd love to just see the, the internal, um, um, breadth of it all, but, um... I guess is this, if this, uh, I'll look at this as a compromise, as opposed to asking folks to line item, items that we need, um, in exchange for doing business here. But, um, if you guys are comfortable with this, I, I will, I will vote for the project reluctantly in some areas. All right, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protan Martinez.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today, and also Economic Development Director Fuentes for your presentation. Uh, just a quick question, so it seems that, according to your presentation, I'm talking to Mr. Fuentes, um, that there is in, already planned a parking structure on the property in the northwest side, and the city's already, and the city's also planning a parking structure on the northeast side, according to the presentation. Do I have that correct? And if not, could I ask for clarity on that?
Yes, Councilmember Martinez, that was the intent of the city acquiring what we refer to as parcel six from, uh, the Village Partners. The intent was to, in the future, develop a parking structure where, um, individuals can go, park on that parking structure, and then access the Montclair Trans Center via the promenade, um, connection on the development, so that there would be a southern access point and a southern parking structure that people couldn't use in lieu of having to park at the Montclair Trans Center. Um, so we, uh, reached out to the developer to see if they were interested in that, and the North Montclair Downtown Specific Plan did have a carve-up for a public parking structure um, on this property. So we negotiated with the developer to acquire the property. Um, in the short term, we will be leasing back the, um, property to the developer to use as a staging area for the leasing of the development, as well as for a, if I recall correctly, it's a 27, um, surface, 27-spot, surface parking lot, until the city elects to move forward with construction of a public parking structure on that parcel.
I will also note that in that public parking structure on the Village Partners', uh, site, parcel number six, uh, the city's agreed that the commercial spaces could have access to available parking in that uh, commercial center to facilitate, uh, the, um, mixed-use component of this particular project. And so I think that the developer is certainly looking forward to that cooperation with the city in relation to that parking structure.
Thank you. So these will both be fairly large parking structures, I imagine?
Well, the space for parcel six would probably limit the parking structure to about 300 spaces. Beyond that, it would probably take the parking structure too high. Um, and so the bulk of the parking would be on the parking structure to be, uh, developed on the Montclair Trans Center property.
I also would add that the existing parking structure is for the tenants that, uh, of that particular development. So the one that's in the northwest corner, uh, is dedicated to tenants, and not for general public use. And it's in the big rectangle section of the drawing that you have, the, the L-shaped one.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'll just make some comments. Uh, first of all, I just want to remind everybody, this is a condition of this development here that we approved back in, uh, 2020. It's one of the conditions that the developer had to comply with, uh, to, uh, to create this, uh, community facility district. And also, I'd just like to remind, this is part of the North Montclair Specific Plan strategy. Uh, obviously, this residential development is an open development, meaning it has public spaces, open spaces, has a park, which is a city park, has streets, which are city streets. So part of the CFD does include to maintain those facilities that the city is normally responsible for. Another important component of this is, is that, uh, it helps to cover cities' costs. We just had a meeting prior to this, and obviously moving forward, we think, because of economics, economy, our budget situation will get, uh, more challenging for next year. But when Proposition 13 was adopted, um, regarding, um, property taxes, it really brought down limitation of property tax, especially when it came to residential properties. As you know, properties, properties can be only reassessed a maximum of 2% per year, even though the assessed value of that property could be greater than 2%. So... These can be, uh, this community facility district is now becoming the norms of, of residential developments, not just happening in Montclair, but it's happening throughout California. A lot of the residential developments you see now have these CFDs, the Melroos. Why? Because they gotta capture revenue to cover the cost. If you don't capture the revenue, then the only avenue you have to cover those costs is a general fund. Part of the general fund is property taxes, has other mechanisms in there. But again, um, if, as costs go up, we're limited to 2% maximum of the property taxes, so now you're relying upon other forms of the general fund, like sales taxes, if those go up as well. So, you know, I, I know there's this discussion about concessions, and what Fontana's done. This is one of the things Fontana is doing. They are also, also doing community facility districts, uh, for their residential neighborhood. So, um, what we have here tonight is a, I think, a very beautiful project, Montclair, that really stands out, not just here in Montclair, but in our region. It's a po-, a project, again, I said, has a public park, has public streets, has an access, uh, pedestrian access to the metro station, to Arrow, to Arrow Road, that's a public access, that's not private. And so there's the many reasons for this project, why a community facility district is needed. So I, uh, I think it's important now that we go ahead and move forward, and I'm going to ask that, uh, if there's a motion for approval, uh, for the final resolution number 25-3471, establishing City of Montclair Community Facility District Number 2025-1, the Village, at the Village Partners, and the boundaries thereof.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Lopez, I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mayor Protan Martinez. And let's go ahead and do an electronic vote on the first motion. Let's just say the first resolution. It's adopted 4 to 1. We will now go on to the next, uh, motion. This is adoption of Resolution Number 25-3472. Calling a special election submitting to the voters, the City of Montclair Community Facility District Number 2025-1, the Village of Montclair, a proposition for the annual levy of special taxes within the CFD Number 2025-1, to pay the cost of certain services to provided by the CFD, and establishing the appropriations limit for CFD Number 2025-1. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by, uh, Councilmember Lopez, I get a second by
I'll second.
Councilmember Martine, uh...
Go ahead.
Mendez, let's please vote. Electronic vote. Okay, that's adopted 5-0. Um, city clerk conducts special election, announces results in canvas of votes. That's you, uh, city clerk? I believe you're next.
I have the vote right here. I've conducted and canvassed the special election. All votes are cast in favor of the ballot measures, and therefore, both ballot measures pass.
Right, thank you. I will now ask for a motion for adoption of Resolution Number 25-3473, declaring the results of the special election for the City of Montclair Community Facility District Number 2025-1, on the proposition with respect to the annual levy of special taxes, to pay the cost of certain services to provided by the Community Facility District, and establishing the appropriate progress limit. Can I get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lopez first. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilmember Mendez, please vote. Adopted 5-0. I believe, uh, this is the last motion. Um, I'm asking for a motion to, uh, one, read the ordinance Number 25-1011, levying special taxes by title number, only declaring this the first reading, and set a public hearing to conduct the second reading, consider adoption of ordinance Number 25-1011 on Monday, March 17, at 7:00 PM, in these, in these council chambers. And let me see, in the ordinance Number 25-1011 of the City Council, City of Montclair, acting in its capacity as legislative body, the City of Montclair, Community Faci-, adopting the Community Facility District Number 25, 2025-1, authorizing a levy of special taxes in such Community Facility District. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lopez makes the motion. Can I get a second? I think Councilmember Mendez seconded the motion.
Oh.
Uh, let's go ahead and, uh, let's go ahead and vote. That's what happens if you don't respond immediately, the mayor has his pick. So we'll give Councilmember Lopez, uh, a big A today for making the motions. That's adopted 5-0. And so this concludes the CFD formation.
I can go ahead and read.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ordinance Number 25-1011, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montclair, acting in its capacity as legislative body of the City of Montclair Community Facilities District Number 2025-1, Village at Montclair, County of San Bernardino, State of California, authorizing the levy of a special tax in such Community Facilities District.
Okay. So we are now done with the public hearing item, we will go down to the consent calendar. I'll start with my left, any, anything on my left you wish to, to remove the consent calendar? No? How about my right?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull Item D, like David, Number 2.
Okay. All right. Hearing nothing, let's go with Item D2.
Let me get the page. In the, uh, staff report, the listing of streets, unless I overlooked it, uh, the listing of streets do not have the proposed addition in it yet. Am I correct? Because this listing is the existing number of streets with, okay. This item before us would add new parking restrictions, uh, permanent parking restrictions for the south side of San Bernardino Street between Mona Vista and Mills Avenue. That particular portion of street is the, I guess, the winding part of San Bernardino, as you're coming up Mills, um, make a, ride onto San Bernardino, and then it kind of swerves as you get to, um, Ramona, and, um, Mona Vista. The, the concern that I have is that strip between Ramona and Mills, because that would include that, correct?
No, actually...
The south side?
No, this is, uh, for this, um, are you talking about Mills or San Bernardino?
No, San Bernardino Street.
Yeah, no, San Bernardino is from Mona Vista to Fremont only, the south side, right in front of the hospital there. We noticed there's a lot of, uh, cars that were parking there, so we wanted to restrict that there.
Well, I'm reading here, the proposed resolution...
Yeah, the agenda report is incorrect. It should have said Fremont Avenue. Mona Vista and Fremont Avenue.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, that, yeah, okay, the staff report is incorrect, that's, I was concerned about that area, there's residents there, they need their parking, I was going to vote against it. But if it is the, it's Fremont, across from the hospital.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry, that, that is incorrect.
I do see that there are, I, I was beginning to think I was going mad, Monica.
Sorry, sorry, my bad.
I, I, I do see RVs parking there quite a bit and all that, no, okay. If that's the only addition, I'm fine with it, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. In the, uh, let me make sure that it is correct on the actual resolution real quick.
But the ordinance adequately reflects the Fremont area.
That's what I, I'm checking.
And if not, the correction will be carried over.
That does, it is correct in the resolution.
Councilmember Ru.
Sorry.
To clarify, because I want to make certain, right now, in front of the hospital, there's no parking.
On the south side of the street.
Only on the south side.
Excuse me?
On the south side, we're prohibiting parking. I haven't noticed, uh, on the north side, I don't know.
I think Councilmember Ru's question is currently, we, you can park on the south side and the north side of the hospital? Both sides right now? Currently?
You cannot park on the south side.
You cannot park on the south side in front of the hospital or the HSA.
Correct.
Which is Fremont to Montevista.
Yes.
Yes.
So this only covers the north side.
The south side.
No, the south side. We're reconfirm, the, the no parking restriction on the south side is temporary.
Okay, the south side, okay.
Is temporary at this point in time.
Right now, the north side would be where the hospital is.
Yes.
So there's no parking there. I should have driven by.
I believe so. I believe so, yes.
So it would be across the street, there would be no parking.
Correct.
And that's the only addition on here?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm okay with it.
Just just clarify, there is park on the north side in front of the hospital, right?
I I wanna say yes, but um.
He just clarified.
Because the, the hospital is, you know, has a parking facility.
Yeah, just uh don't even answer right now. If you can look at it and just email the city, the city council on that question. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. So can I get a motion for consent calendar?
Miss, unless no one else wants to. Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
Got the A plus so far. Seconded by, uh moved by Councilman Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Rue. I'll vote, please. Adopted five zero. We'll go down to communications, city attorney, city manager.
Oh.
City manager, nothing. Okay, I'll begin with the planning commission appointment. I appreciate uh Councilmember Mendez and also Plan Commissioner Chair Manny Martinez, and then also Community Development Director, uh who did not participate in the vote, but was in the room. He is, we have three candidates. I believe you have a memo. Everybody has a memo in front of you?
Yes.
Yeah. We have three candidates that applied for the open seat. They conducted the interviews on February the twentieth, did the scoring system, and with the scoring system, uh Denise Johnson is in first. And you see the other two applicants applied as well. So as the mayor of the city, I'm going to take this recommendation to, uh this recommendation from the Plan Commission panel, and I'm gonna nominate the former Councilmember Denise Johnson to the Plan Commission. Can I get a second to nomination?
I'll second.
Um it's been seconded by Councilmember Martinez.
Mendez.
Mendez, excuse me.
Sorry.
It's on, and let's go ahead and vote then. Okay, the vote is uh three to two. Uh uh that is adopted. The nomination is approved. So going on, I'm going to first begin, uh we're going to end this meeting in the memory of Tony Ciotti. Tony Ciotti was an employee, retired employee of the City of Montclair. Uh he worked many years in code enforcement. He was a supervisor of code enforcement. And in fact, he is related to uh Gabe Fondero. This is Gabe Fondero's uncle. And uh we will remember Tony Ciotti uh as we in this me- in this meeting. Next, I just want to compliment uh code enforcement. Uh as you recall, the building on Mills Avenue, and that we've had a couple of discussions uh previously by a resident down there, Mills, by the, by the railroad tracks. Um the cleanup did take place last Tuesday. It's been debated, the cleanup, uh even though we don't have receivership, but we got staff to clean it up, and hopefully uh.
It's holding.
It's holding, and we, that bill goes to the prop unit or whoever's gonna own that property, and then we'll get the money back. Next, I just want to announce that this coming Thursday, I will participate, uh this, represent this body at the Inland and Power Utilities Agency's Sewage Policy Committee. Uh there is a fee study that has been completed in regards to wastewater charges. And the fee study is recommending a eighteen percent increase in sewer fees over a two-year period of time, nine percent effective July one, and then July one of next year, another nine percent. We were just receiving the first draft of it. It's not the final vote, just received for the first time on Thursday. Um as you recall, this council did a, did a Proposition two eighteen approval last August. I think at that time, um staff put in their uh annual adjustments of about ten percent and uh ensure we have sufficient funds to cover increases. I think Councilmember Mendez, if I'm correct, you questioned why ten percent? And um, well, this is one reason why. Um I I will say this, I have some concerns about this sewage pay increase, and I plan on um asking a lot of questions at that meeting Thursday, and I anticipate colleagues, I know the City of Ontario will have a lot of questions, and I anticipate the colleagues from other cities will have the same question. Again, this is, this is uh round one. Uh the adoption of this, I think, has to take place by June as as part of their budget. And then finally, um this coming Wednesday, uh SBCTA is going to consider entering into a contract with the San Diego County Sheriff's Department to provide security along the MetroLink system in San Diego County, the San Bernardino line, basically, starting from Montclair going east. They already provide security services on the Arrow uh route, the Arrow train that goes from Relands to downtown San Bernardino. And this will be expanded. That means deputies will be on the train, and also they'll be at the platform. So um I think the chief, uh he's got contacts there, and hopefully we get better responses. And then we can also have a means to better provide uh security at our station. I will start with uh Mayor Protem Martinez.
Thank you. I am, I'm sure Councilmember Rue will go more into detail about it, but I just wanted to mention that uh the Miles for Montclair event on Saturday, which is a walk in support of unhoused youth, youth in Montclair, was a huge success. And I really was not expecting the turnout, especially considering the weather, but it was blocks, blocks long. It was a really, really great event and turnout. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendez?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Lopez?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um February, I'm surprised Councilmember Mendez had nothing. On February twenty-fifth, which was last Tuesday, um I and about a thousand of my closest friends, one of them including Councilmember Mendez, attended the Chino Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast hosted by the Chino Valley Mayor's Prayer Committee and hosted by Chino Mayor Eunice Yoloa and Chino Hills Mayor Art Bennett. And a thousand folks from throughout the region, business owners, elected officials, um you name it, were in attendance, and it was great to come together annually uh for this event. And a couple of years ago, the event had about five hundred people. It's now doubled in size. Word's getting out, the event's becoming bigger and bigger. Um and it was uh just great to be amongst uh some like-minded people and folks that are active in our community, like the Ovitz were there, Sue and Gary Ovit. Um elected officials from Chino uh out in the high desert showed up. Um so you had great interest, and you had representatives from Norma Torres's office, Senator Rubio's office, Senator Sayardo, Philip Chen, um Assemblymember Rodriguez's office. It was great. It was a great turnout. And um hopefully next year, more folks from Montclair can, can come. Um I actually was gonna bring this up, and it kind of piggybacks on what the mayor stated, but um this Wednesday at their board meeting, IEUA, Wednesday, March fifth, at ten A M., at their uh boardroom located at, and I'll talk slowly for folks that may be watching this video subsequently later, at six zero seven five, Kimball Avenue in Chino, six zero seven five, Kimball Avenue in Chino, Wednesday, the fifth, at ten A M. On their agenda is, uh for one of their workshops, uh workshop items, is the cost of service update and proposed rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if anybody is interested, feel free to attend the IEUA board meeting, and that's in addition to the meeting that the mayor had stated to happen on Thursday, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Thursday at three thirty, same place.
Just making a note here. So they have two meetings to address the proposed rate increase and go in here.
The first meeting will be with the IEUA Governing Board, that's Wednesday.
Yes.
The second meeting will be with the IEUA Policy Committee, which is the seven cities, which one includes Kukamanga Water District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then yesterday, uh I had the privilege and the honor of attending Golden Girls opening ceremony, which was held at um Golden Girls Field on Benson Avenue. Um it was uh great to see folks out in the cold, the wind. Uh I'd say they had maybe about two hundred, maybe three hundred people in attendance. Uh it looked a little smaller. The leagues looked a little smaller in size, maybe about five or six teams, as opposed to maybe close to ten that they would have. But nonetheless, um it was great to kick off with them, their twenty twenty-five season. I know the mayor made an attendance. They said he was there, um but he had a prior commitment and had to go. I understand how that goes, but um they, they're excited about the season, and they're grateful for the services that the city offers them. And so um go Golden Girls. Hope you guys all have, or girls all have, a very successful season in representing our little city that could very well throughout the region. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bill Rue.
Thank you. I will pick up on Miles for Montclair, as the Mayor Protem mentioned. Uh I've participated in Miles for Montclair, every one they've had, save for two, and I had to be out of town for something. Originally, Miles for Montclair was on the Martin Luther King Holiday, because Dr. King Holiday is supposed to be one of service to the community. They changed it for many reasons to do it in March. One of the reasons, the weather. But we've been holding it in March, and we still have bad weather, but it didn't stop three, four hundred students from turning out and doing what they can to help their fellow students who are unhoused. I, this is an issue you've heard me talk about for a long time. I won't go on all night on it. There should never be unhoused high school students, college students, or elementary school students. We need ha- we need shelters to house families. We need shelters to house these students. The congregate shelters of a hundred, two hundred, three hundred people just are not working. I don't care what anybody tells you, they don't work. And if these are high school students in our community who are homeless, we should find ways to house them in our community. This isn't something we should pass along to some area of the county or pass along to another city and say, well, they'll just get a bus to Montclair. So I I truly believe we need to do something. And I've talked about this for a long time, and hopefully it will fall on some receptive ears. Um on February twenty-second, I boarded a Foothill Transit bus, and Senator Rubio was the driver. Senator Rubio represents our city in Sacramento. She was at the Foothill Transit Rodeo, and they allowed the members of the Senate and the Assembly and some, a few others, to drive the bus. So I was there, queued up. I went to the event because they asked me to be a judge, kind of last minute. And it was really great. It was fun. She drove the bus. I let her know that I'm the trans, does the same thing. We'd be letting her know in the future when they have their bus rodeo, so she has a chance to participate in that. It was a fun afternoon. Um again, we heard about Tony Ciotti. It was, I'm, I I'm glad we'll adjourn in his memory tonight. He was a wonderful, longtime employee of the city. I, Mr. Mayor, how long was he employed with the city? Thirty-something years?
I don't know, but he was for many, many years.
Yeah.
Marsha knows.
Yeah, but it was a long, long time.
Yeah. I believe he started in public works, if I'm correct.
Yeah. And so, you know, to his family, we offer our condolences. I want to mention the passing of somebody else, although not a Montclair resident, certainly uh part of a family in the region, the passing of Ben Thuvanel, the son of former Upland Police Chief and City Manager Martin Thuvanel. He passed away at the young age of forty-seven, and certainly we extend our condolences to his family. I mentioned earlier, Forever Twenty-One, they're closing all their stores, all three hundred fifty-nine, sixty, some whatever, uh stores across the country. Um a bit on fires, I'll keep it real fast, to three pieces of legislation, because they're not specific to fires. They're specific to a nat- home or property loss in a natural disaster. So at some point, hopefully it doesn't happen. But if it's a natural disaster here in Montclair, if these pass, it would be a benefit to our residents. One of them, by Assemblymember Harabedian, from the Foothill Communities, his district goes from roughly Glendale, Laurentia, Kukamanga. He has a bill that says, if you should lose your home in a natural disaster and go into forbearance, forbearance isn't foreclosure, it simply says you will defer those mortgage payments to the end of the loan or to a date certain in the future, that you will not have your credit score dinged. What happened in the Paradise Fires, uh families had lost their property. They went into forbearance because they're saying, I can't make the mortgage payment right now. I will in a few years. When they went to rebuild, they could not rebuild because they, their credit had been dinged for seven years. So it created a huge problem for them. Uh also, Assemblyman Harabedian has that if you should lose your property in it, and and some of these bills are still fluid with the the language on it, but roughly, if you should lose your property in a natural disaster and you receive an insurance settlement, you will keep the interest on it, not the bank. Again, in the Paradise Fires, many people lost their property. They received an insurance settlement, but the bank kept the interest, and they were keeping the money for maybe three, four years in their bank account because they had to rebuild. And the last one, and I could go on for months and months, Assemblyman Choi out of Irvine, that if you receive an insurance settlement because your property's been lost in a natural disaster, that money will be tax-free. Again, in the Paradise Fires, people lost their homes, they received an insurance settlement, and they're being taxed on it as income. It's not their fault their home burned down. So those are just three bills. There's probably thirty or forty that I'm working on, but I thought those are germane here, because if we have a natural disaster, I hope these pass to help us. And then, just as statistic, we keep hearing about a lot of different things with California, but we are the fifth-largest economy in the world. Last year, Californians contributed four hundred and thirty billion, with a B, dollars, to the U.S. Treasury, the largest net donor state. For every dollar we send there, we receive back only eighty-three cents. Maybe in a disaster, we get more, but generally, over a forty-year period, it's been about eighty-three cents. I remember first hearing that statistic, and I think, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lopez, you'll remember when Christopher Cox represented a little bit of Anaheim Hill, tiny bit of Chino Hills, then down into Anaheim Hills and all of that. The statistic was the same then, about eighty-three cents. So in forty years, it hasn't changed. And we also had more venture capital in this state last year than any other state. So, you know, we need to continue to be California. We need to continue to push what we do, and we need to get our money back. Thank you.
Okay. With that, uh we have personnel committee minutes, and we're adjourned. Thank you.